Good evening, friends and neighbors. I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting is being held teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org slash virtual meeting. At that screen, click on one of the two tabs to either watch or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please pick the click the raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen when the public hearing for the item is opened. As I see Alex, I'm guessing is working tonight, has done and may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute in front of each speaker at the first time for maximum total of eight minutes. There it is on our screen. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make discussion clear for the record and for the public. Recording Secretary Evans, may I have a roll call, please?
Let's see if I can get through this one correctly. Commissioner Hill. And you're muted.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings may be joining the meeting in progress this evening. Commissioner Wetton will be absent this evening. Vice Chair Matt. Can't do that. Vice Chair. Maza?
Here.
Is that correct pronunciation? Thank you. I'm gonna work on it. Chair Smith.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, great. We have the approval of the, oh, wait, hang on. We have, I'm gonna ask Director Malika for the requested changes for the staff recommendations for items four A, four B, four C, and five B. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm going through this. So to be specific, item four A, the recommendation is to continue that to a date uncertain. Four B, continue until October seventeenth of this year. Item four C, at the request of the applicant, continue that to October third, twenty-two. Item five B, at the request of the applicant, continue that to item, excuse me, October third, twenty-twenty-two. Rebecca, I believe that was all of them.
That is. Thank you.
Okay, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue item four A to a date uncertain, four B to October seventeenth, four C to October third, and five B to October third.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
May we have a roll call?
Commissioner? Maza?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it was Vice Chair Maza. I'm, I'm gonna get this eventually. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
And Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have we have the approval of the agenda. The posting of the agenda.
Agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September ninth, twenty-twenty-two.
Wonderful. And now we're on to written and oral communications from the public. Two A. Rebecca, do we have any public speakers?
There are no speakers who have signed up in advance of the meeting. If there is anyone present in the meeting this evening that wishes to speak on an item, not on the agenda, but under the planning commission's jurisdiction, please indicate it by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Wonderful.
And see you then.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Hill.
All right, first in. Yeah, so I'm here in Australia. I just, an observation, not so much an opinion, but just another point of perspective. You know, there's a, there's sort of an embedded narrative around the city that the planning department is responsible for a lot of delays. And I think that's, that narrative is just kind of getting more and more embedded. And doubtless, there's some truth in that, given the staffing shortages and so forth. But I had the privilege of spending a couple of days with a city planner for the city of Sydney, an old family friend. And we talked about planning and delays and all kinds of planning things. And her perspective was that the greatest source of delay comes from the architects and the expeditors. And it happens because, for different reasons, they have their own agenda, things they want to do. Maybe they're not necessarily knowledgeable about the code. And what happens is that they act as sort of an intermediary between the owner applicants and the planning staff. And they basically represent what are, in essence, their own shortcomings to the owner applicants as being the fault of the planning staff. So just a kind of, and a note to observe out there, how much of the delay, and this is, you know, sort of a rhetorical question, but how much of the delay comes from that sort of miscommunication between the owner applicants and the planning staff that might be, you know, biased in some manner by the interceding architects slash expeditors, whoever's in between, and tends to want to blame it all on the planning staff. So, yeah, just, just a little observation on that. And I guess where the rubber hits the road and where that might be an issue for us is when we see like half a dozen variances in an application or something like that. Then you start to suspect that maybe the owner applicant isn't getting the fully straight story about what's really possible. So again, not really an opinion so much, it's just an observation that the narrative can be very different. That's it.
Very good. Vice Chair Maza?
Yeah, I'd like to second what Craig says, especially the variances. We, we just get variances like crazy. And yes, we have to say there's a reason for them, but I think in a lot of cases, it's laziness of design and houses can be built on most properties without a bunch of variances. My next question is maybe a dumb one. I do not remember the planning staff coming back to the planning commission on the question of whether howdy's outside patio, was it enclosed space or not? And I'm reading the minutes from last meeting. We had asked for that to come back to us. So that's just a question. It may have come back and I fell asleep or whatever.
Chair Smith, would you like me to answer now or under the director comments? What would you like?
Oh, I, I think you can answer him now if you'd like, please.
Certainly. We did go out and conduct a site inspection after the last meeting. And I'm sorry that I didn't provide an update. We did find that we, there was a concern there as a valid one that was raised by the, by the commission about enclosure, and we worked with the building official. And we are currently, I think, I don't want to misspeak here, but I believe they submitted to us a revised plan for us to review to make certain that we get them back into conformance. But I apologize, we, we have not presented an update yet to the commission, but we, we can definitely do that and get it scheduled. I'll follow up with Rebecca in the morning, and that way the commission understands what action we are taking out there and exactly what we found.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I don't really have anything tonight. I'm I'm okay. I can hang on to whatever I was thinking. Okay, we can move on to the consent calendar.
Chair, if I may, one quick announcement.
You still have your, your own stuff. I apologize. Very sorry.
No, this one you'll like. It's, it's, it's a biggie. In, you know, we've been the last, since August, we've been trying different things at our public counter. In last August, one of the things we did was, I believe I mentioned to the, to the commission that we, we are working on a new submittal process to make certain we get complete submittals. And we're trying to eliminate that runaround of where an expediter or a homeowner comes to City Hall on a Tuesday, and they try to meet with every agency before they submit to us. We are trying to eliminate that with our new submittal process. But the other big news for the counter is that our fire rebuild folks will have public counter hours on Tuesdays and Thursdays as well. From nine AM till twelve AM, they'll be located at the half circle, the, the round desk there that when you walk through City Hall doors on the upper floor from the back parking lot there, you'll find a member of the fire rebuild team twice a week there available to answer questions. So when you come down to see the other consultants, you'll also have that opportunity. And I've got him there till twelve. That way I know the other consultants stay in their counter hours around eleven. This gives a bit more of a window to get access to our fire rebuild team. And of course, if anybody does need a meeting outside of those times, more than glad to set up a meeting with anybody. If you call Akash Shah or just our general planning hotline, we'll call you back and set up that meeting. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thank you. Okay, now the consent calendar. We just have any, nothing else we've got here, so we've got no just previously discussed. And so we can go down to, it looks as though, because these are all receive and file, we can go down to the approval of the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes. I can't remember what number it is.
Three B three.
I move we approve three B three by vote.
And do we have a second?
I think, Mr., I mean, Commissioner Heatherius.
Yeah, I need to hear that again. Sorry.
The, the minutes, the approval of the, of the
The minutes, yeah, I'll second that.
May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we go to?
And we don't have anyone signed up to speak or requesting an item be pulled from the public on the consent calendar?
Oh, thank you. Hang on, I think that's alarm.
Hit it with a baseball bat.
My husband used to joke that that meant that dinner was ready.
Or half ready.
Okay, I took it off the wall and stuck it between the mattress and the
Do we have to make a motion to accept the consent? Or just go on?
It'd be nice if you either make a motion in second or just approve it by consensus, but just to have it formally entered into the record.
I move we approve by consensus. Everybody put their thumb up and we approve it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So carried.
Made that easy. Okay, we have one, we have our new public hearing and it's five A. And an application to relocate an existing crosswalk and traffic signal. We have a there she is. We have our senior planner Thompson here to give us a staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Smith, and members of the planning commission. There we go. The project you have before you tonight is for the project located at two-two-six-zero-two-point-five Pacific Coast Highway. This is for coastal development permit number twenty-one zero-four-seven. Next slide, please. Picture here is a vicinity map and aerial photograph of the project site. For reference, the crosswalk is most closely located to McDonald's Restaurant to the north and Nobu Restaurant to the south. The focus of this project is for the relocation of the existing crosswalk and the relocation of an existing signal. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, the project includes the relocation of the existing crosswalk approximately thirty feet to the west and the relocation of an existing traffic signal approximately twenty feet to the west. It should be noted that this project is part of a larger project, citywide improvement for the signal sync. And that project was approved for like-for-like replacements of existing signals that was approved ministerially through the planning department. The Public Works Department will provide a presentation shortly that elaborates a little bit further on the total scope of this project. But as mentioned, the scope of our before you tonight is specifically for the existing crosswalk relocation and the traffic signal relocation. Next slide, please. Picture here is the site plan circled in red, shows that relocation of that existing crosswalk to the west. Next slide, please. That includes my presentation. Staff recommends the adoption of resolution number twenty-two zero-six-zero, approving coastal development permit number twenty-one zero-four-seven. And I'll turn it over to our Public Works Department that will provide an additional presentation. Thank you.
Excellent. I saw John Maza had his hand raised. Do you want to take a question before we do the presentation, or we may end up answering his question during the presentation?
Well, my question probably will be answered, but I, I studied the drawing. I couldn't find any reference at all to any building or any property lines. So I just went down and I had to guess where it was. So I hopefully you're going to show us exactly where it is.
Okay.
And would you like to take disclosures prior to calling, opening the public hearing?
Thank you. I was just gonna do that myself. Disclosures, Commissioner Maza or Vice Chair Maza?
I went down and stood in McDonald's and tried to figure it out. I'll find out later if I did.
Commissioner Hill?
I sent an email some days ago to Jessica about just really needing more information to make any decision about this. She forwarded it to Rob. I got a reply from him saying we'll hear that those questions will be answered tonight, and I hope so. And that's it.
And I have none. So I think
I have an additional one. I've, I sent an email to Jessica asking for the CUP parking plan for Nobu and Soho to be included in the hearing.
Okay. Assistant Public Works Director Spade, I guess it's all yours if you want to talk to us here.
Excellent. So, good evening, commissioners. We do have a short presentation. As Jessica had indicated, the the item is really just for the, the crosswalk, but we wanted to give you a full overview of the project and what it does for the traffic on PCH for all of the signals and in, in general, give, give more detail to, to the project. So Sri, are, are you, do you have the, the presentation set up, queued up?
I do.
Excellent. Okay, so I'd like to introduce Sri Chakravarti, who is a licensed traffic engineer. And he's the designer of the Signal Sync project, major coordinator with all things Caltrans on this, and he will give the presentation.
Hi Sri, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, I was trying to share, but I think sharing is disabled if I can, if I can get that activated, please.
Sharing is not possible during the planning commission meetings. If you could email your presentation to A Montana at malibu city dot org.
Yep, I can do that. Or A Montana at malibu city dot org?
Yes.
It's A Montana, M-O-N-T-A-N-O. N-O, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, I just emailed it. Probably should receive it within the next minute or two. Excellent. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sri Chakravarti with Kim Lee Horn. We are the design engineers for this overall signal system improvements project on Pacific Coast Highway. And today, as Troy mentioned, what I'm going to do is talk about the overall project and also focus a little bit on the crosswalk location. Specifically, we have a few slides that we want to go over specifically for the crosswalk location also. Next slide, please. What you'll see as I talk about this project, whenever I mention agenda or project purpose and goals, it's speaking to the overall Pacific Coast Highway signal system project that encompasses the entire stretch from John Tyler to Topanga Canyon. Just, I want to just mention that upfront. We'll discuss the project purpose and goals, the project overview, discussing limits, improvements, the benefits of the project and the funding. And also touch on where we are on the project and then discuss the next steps. Next slide, please. The overall purpose and goals, it, the project does accomplish multiple goals. This is back to the PCH safety study that was approved by the city council several years ago. So the purpose of the project is to accomplish all the many goals of that safety study to improve safety for all modes that includes vehicles, bikes and pets, reduce traffic congestion and environmental impacts of transportation, increase the efficiency in the corridor management, specifically as it relates to Pacific Coast Highway. We all understand how much corridor-wide improvements are needed. So this project does that and also improves the ability to remotely and dynamically adjust signal timing. So that's been a key component of this project to be able to adjust the signal timing. Right now, that ability is not there. And I'll go into the details of how that, that is going to be accomplished. Next slide, please. Project overview, I will spend a minute here on the overall project discussing the limits. Next slide. So these are the limits of the current project. Like I mentioned, John Tyler to Topanga Canyon, eight miles with thirteen signalized intersections. You'll notice over there, right in the middle, intersection number seven is the pedestrian signal that we're also going to focus and spend a little bit more time today. Excellent. The next couple of slides, want to, to spend a little bit of time on what, how the existing traffic signal system is out there on PCH between the project limits I mentioned, John Tyler to Topanga Canyon, and what this project achieves. Once it's completed, it's, it's, it's currently almost finalized in the design. Once it's approved by Caltrans, it's constructed. What, how does the new traffic signal system looks? So the existing traffic signal currently requires manual changes by field personnel. So whenever we have an issue on signal timing, you have Caltrans signal personnel come out there and make changes. So whenever we have any issues, any complaints, that automatically leads to a longer response time. When we have this new signal system established, that can be done remotely. That can be done from the Caltrans Traffic Management Center. That's the TMC in Glendale. So Caltrans will have access to the signals on, on PCH, and they will be able to adjust the timing based on any issues or complaints that they, that we provide or they get. The second aspect is there's currently no battery backup system. Through this project, this will allow installation of battery backup, specifically during emergencies and power outages, that will allow the signals to operate for a period of time. The existing traffic signal is also fixed signal timing, meaning the green time for different movements is preset and does not really adapt to the changing traffic conditions. That is an issue, especially when there are, when there is a lot of congestion on PCH. What the new traffic signal system does is it adapts to the changing traffic conditions that will alleviate any congestion and backups on PCH. So this applies to different movements, including the side streets, the canyon roads that come in and intersect with the Pacific Coast Highway. Whenever there are lighter traffic conditions on, on PCH, with the new signal system, the wait time on the canyon roads intersecting with PCH will be significantly lower than what you experience currently. The next one is pedestrian signals that are, that you have all along PCH. They operate independently, meaning they're not connected to the adjacent signals. So whenever a pedestrian pushes the button, they're automatically granted the, the ability to cross PCH. Sometimes it, as, it's a good thing, but sometimes it also affects the traffic flow along PCH and does not allow for optimal flow. What the new signal system does is all those pedestrian signals are tied together with the other traffic signals. So it provides a good balance of traffic flow on PCH while still allowing the pedestrians to cross PCH at, at reasonable intervals. Next slide, please. We'll continue on the differences between the existing signal system and the new signal system. Currently, there's no communication between signals, meaning that, you know, there's not an ability to understand what the signal downstream or upstream is doing. So there's not an opportunity to adjust. The new signal system does that through technology and through cabinet controllers, new cabinet controllers, and also through the fiber optic system that will be installed through this new signal system. Signals are communicating and understanding what's happening upstream and downstream so they can effectively meter traffic on PCH. There's also no cameras or video detection cameras just to be able to visually verify how the conditions on PCH are. With this, with this, as part of the new signal system, we do have CCTV cameras and video detection systems that'll understand the levels of traffic on PCH and adjust accordingly. There's currently no bicycle detection on PCH. As part of this project, the new signal system will have bike detection loops to be able to detect bikes on PCH and also on the side streets, on, on the canyon roads that intersect with PCH. Bike loops will be installed to detect bicycles. The last item, standard pedestrian signals are what we have out there. As part of this new system, we'll have accessible pedestrian system. That's really the new standard to be able to accommodate all users of the, of the facility. So this is more of a, a cutting edge new system that will be installed as part of this project. Next slide, please. This is a visual representation. This is a visual representation, just taking an example of one intersection kind of showing what are, what all the improvements that we will be installing. You'll notice right at the top, the orange line that goes east to west. That's the fiber optic line that I was reference, referring to earlier. That is tied to, on the top right corner, there's a black box. That's the traffic signal controller that the fiber optic gets tied into. It'll also have bicycle detection, cameras, emergency vehicle preemption. That's also part of the system to be able to allow emergency response and first responders to get priority on PCH. As part of the upgrades, we're also going to upgrade ADA curb ramps as well as provide all types of detections for vehicles as well as bicycles throughout this, throughout the intersection and throughout the project limits. Next slide please. So with that, I think that provides an overview of what the entire project is. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on the crosswalk specifically. So the next four slides will be focused on the crosswalk study as well as the design. So at this location where McDonald's and Nobu is, that signal, there are some deficiencies for that location. So the goal of the improvement at that specific location is to allow for efficient movements of all users, heads, bike, bicyclists as well as vehicles. So as part of this study, what we did, we reviewed traffic counts. We were out there doing field observations. Based on all that, we completed an analysis based on traffic as well as also conducted a collision review. So the different parameters that we were looking at was, you know, where are the locations of the left turn lanes? The two-way left turn lane pocket, that's, that's out there. We were looking at that. Also considering the location of several driveways on either side of PCH and how that's impacting all the queuing and the congestion at that location as well as the pedestrian crosswalk, that's right in the middle and how that ties into the overall improvements. So based on all this, what the data suggested was the signal and the driveway location is primarily leading to a lot of queuing and also potential conflicting movements. Next slide please. On this slide, we're showing traffic data as well as collision data. And so the table in the top shows the average daily in and out traffic that's collected from Friday through Sunday. And this is a cumulative information that was collected for, over a period of several months. So what this shows is average daily traffic. So the north driveway, just to orient this location, the north driveway, this is the, for this driveway, based on just Caltrans standards, PCH is north-south. So that's kind of what we are going with here. The north driveway is the furthest driveway on the Nobu side. Center driveway is the middle driveway on the Nobu side and south driveway. So you'll see here the in and out traffic. The north driveway has a lot more traffic that's coming out versus coming in. The center driveway has a lot more incoming traffic. So that's the traffic that's using the, the two-way left turn pocket, the refuge lane that's in, in the center. And the south driveway has a few inbound vehicles, but a lot more outbound vehicles out of the driveway. We also looked at the collision data between 2018 and 2020. That was the most recent three-year information available from Caltrans. That's the source, CASIS. We looked at what are the different types of collisions that are happening. You'll see here, there's several sides wiping rear end. So whenever we see these types of collisions, that indicates congestion or slowdown as well as a lot of lane changing maneuvers that happen in this area that are not typical. So that's why you'll see a lot more side swipe as well as reading collisions. You do see a couple of broadside collisions also that are broadside as collisions that are at right angle to each other. Next slide please. So based on the collision data, the traffic analysis, the field observations that we, that we completed, the recommendation is to do a few things. One is to relocate the crosswalk just slightly north along PCH. I think Jessica mentioned that in her, in her presentation, the distance. And move the Nobu exit driveway south of the intersection. So in that table that I showed you on the previous slide, just moving the, the southernmost driveway a little further south of the intersection and changing that to an exit driveway only into an entrance. So as opposed to a lot more cars pumping into the intersection, you, that driveway will be converted into an entrance only. So what that does is this will result in simultaneously allowing northbound and southbound left turn movements and accommodating a pedestrian crossing phase. That's, that's there right now. But I think there's a lot of conflicting movements with the pet crossing phase that just leads to a lot of inefficiencies. And then overall, this will also result in reducing the conflict points and improve the overall operations and reducing the queuing that we see out there. Next slide please. So what we see here is a, is a representation of what we're going to see out there after implementation. So on the south side to the right side, bottom right, you'll see there's a gray box that shows the new parking lot entrance driveway. So it's, it's moved to the right a little bit. So that becomes an entrance driveway only. You'll notice that the existing crosswalk is shifted to the left. And then as you go further left, you'll notice that the new limit lines where the vehicle stop is more further to the left. So what this allows is the left turning movements. As you go northbound or westbound into the Nobu driveway, will not conflict with the crosswalk. The same is, is a scenario with the McDonald's movement. So going eastbound or southbound, making a left into, into the McDonald's driveway. The cars making that left turn can make the left turn without conflicting with any other movement. So with these adjustments, I think we have several movements that can be accomplished while also making the pedestrian cross things happen without any conflicts. Next slide please. So with that, now I would like to go back to the overall project discussion and touch on briefly the benefits of the, of the overall PCH signal system. Next, next slide please. A few things that I want to highlight, major incidents response. I think this has been a concern for, for quite a while. What happens when there are major incidents happen? The response time could always be more quicker. So with this, with this project being completed, that will allow quicker, faster communication to emergency responders and also immediately provide that information to Caltrans to be able to relay that information to other travelers on, of the, on PCH so that they can adjust accordingly. It also allows for, you know, the signals to be adjusted accordingly. The timing of the signals adjusted accordingly so that, you know, vehicles are, you know, the congestion on PCH can be alleviated quickly with the adjusted signal timing. Next slide please. Natural disasters and evacuations. This is another area where I think PCH, based on just any disasters that happen, PCH does carry a lot, a lot of traffic in whichever direction that's necessary. So to be able to accommodate and respond to natural disasters, I think with this system will have a lot, a, a better ability to adjust signal timing and push traffic out and away from the disaster area as quickly as we can with the help of communication that's in place, that's being designed as well as signals being the ability for signals adjusting to the changing traffic conditions. Next slide please. And the recurring congestion. So the recurring congestion is the congestion that you experience on a daily basis during AMP, PMP, summer, weekday and weekends. So that congestion can be adjusted based on the traffic levels. The signals are able to respond accordingly as well as if there's any issue out there in the field, Caltrans operators are able to quickly jump in and see what's happening at each intersection and they can remotely monitor and adjust to improve traffic flow. Next slide please. Just a quick reminder for the overall project, project funding is through the Metro-Mageure R funding and owner and operator, although the city is, is the main lead and funding the project, getting this is to be completed for the benefit of the community, the owner and operator is Caltrans just at seven. Next slide please. Want to spend a minute or so on the project status where we are currently and the next steps. Next slide. So at this point, we have submitted our design plans to Caltrans and waiting for any final comments and approval. Next step is this meeting, planning commission meeting to specifically discuss the crosswalk relocation. And if there's any questions or comments, the expectation is by December 2022, the city will be receiving project approvals from Caltrans to go into construction. Once all the contract awarding process, getting contractor onboard, all that happens, spring 2023 is when construction is anticipated to begin. Next slide. And that pretty much is what I have today. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
And at this time, we have Norm Haney, Haney in the meeting who has signed up for public comment.
Great, let's, let's hear from Mr. Haney.
You have to open the meeting.
Okay, that's, sorry.
I'm in right now. I thought the presentation was, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I thought the presentation was very good, but the proper proper movement within Pacific Coast Highway has a lot to do with the enforcement of the laws. And I was wondering, there's a problem in the center lane. I've seen several large trucks parked in the center lane while the driver is at McDonald's getting breakfast. And it seems to me like there should be a substantial fine tickets given. I've never seen any. Also, the center lane is used to unload goods and run across the street with hand trucks. And many times, the, the driver is the one that's doing it. So the truck is actually parked in the center lane and no one can use the center lane to make turns as a result. And sometimes the eyesight's not too good. I've seen several very close opportunities for, for accidents because the person running across the street is not judging the distance of the oncoming cars. So I wonder if there was something we could do about that. I know that this is, is not on the mark with regard to what the presentation was. I don't have anything to discuss with regard to the presentation, only that we'll see if it actually does improve traffic on PCH. I don't think we should take it for granted that it's going to work as smoothly as the presenter seems to think it will. Those are the, those are my comments and, and I'll, I'll leave the, the question about enforcing the law with regard to people parking in the center turn lanes. Thank you.
Okay, back here to the table. Commissioners.
Yep.
Hands up. Hands up, Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first of all, I think the, the overall project goals and elements sound great. Sounds, it sounds like a really good helpful thing with all the, the synchronization and all the various factors to the detection, all that. That all sounds great. I'm, I'm still scratching my head about this specific element. It really wasn't until about seven, 10 year time that we saw the first diagram demonstrating what would change. And I think I understand what is being proposed now. I still don't understand why. For example, you know, we're talking about moving the signal 20 feet. They said this is going to enable left turns going both north and south. Is it not possible to do left turns north and south right now? Or how, how would this be any better? I guess that's a question for either Troy or probably, probably Sri could answer that best.
Yeah, I, I could answer that question, Commissioner Hill. So if, if we could have the presentation back up, I'd like, I'd like to request that graphic.
I mean, we heard, we heard that the, the current location leads to queuing and potential conflicts, but we didn't hear of what and how moving it 20 feet would reduce the queuing.
And Sri, if you could identify the slide that you would like to have displayed.
Oh yeah, so it's a slide number 12.
There we go.
Yep. So currently, just, it's just so it's easier to, you know, explain and also follow the, so the left, the left, the right-hand side. Currently, when you're making a left turn, going into the Nobu driveway, that car has to cross the crosswalk that where it currently exists and then get into the driveway. There's no issue for the car that's making a left turn into McDonald's driveway, but the, the vehicle, the car that has to go into the Nobu driveway from the left turn, left turn lane has to cross over the crosswalk and, and go into the Nobu driveway. At the same time, you have the McDonald's driveway location is where the current limit line is. That provides, when, when that left is made, you know, it, it does allow for the pedestrian crossing on PCH where it currently is. But because of the Nobu driveway conflict with the left turn from PCH into the Nobu driveway, it doesn't allow for the pedestrian crossing and the left turn movement to occur at the same time. So as a result, I mean, on the previous slide, we've shown you how much traffic there is just generally in the area. There's a lot of ins and outs of this driveway. And for that to also concurrently happen with the crosswalk, the pedestrian crossing, it does take away a significant amount of green time from PCH. So if we can look at the amount of time that you need for the pedestrian to cross PCH, that's upward of 30 to 40 seconds.
Okay, let me, let me see if I understand so far. So basically by moving the crosswalk 30 feet to the west, that allows the left turns heading west and turning left into Nobu. So basically by moving the crosswalk thirty feet to the west, that allows the left turns heading west and turning left into Nobu to occur at the same time as the crosswalk in front of them.
That's a potential. Yeah, that's a potential possibility.
But then does moving the crosswalk to the west interact or impact any with the turns coming, heading east and turning into McDonald's? Or is that still available?
Heading east, that is still available. So that that is not going to be impacted. So that's that.
If you look at the new limit lines, sorry, Sri, if you look at the new limit lines as as they pull them back further.
Yeah.
So it it won't impact the eastbound or southbound direction by moving the crosswalk there.
Okay, just I didn't notice that in the three years of traffic study, were any of the accidents pedestrians? I don't think any were. But I I don't know, maybe that's we want to be preemptive, I suppose. I'd I'd like to hear from Norm about whether and how this might impact any traffic into the proposed hotel. And also, I we don't have Stephen Hakim here to talk about whether he has any issues with his driveway next to Norm's. I I would just want to feel confident that Norm feels like this. This isn't an impact. And I guess my understanding here is probably that the any potential change caused by the hotel has not been factored into the traffic analysis. So yeah, that that would just be good to to feel more confident that that doesn't raise any new issues. Can we hear from Norm?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, I don't think the movement of the crosswalk is going to have any significant impact on entering and leaving the hotel. And those are my comments. I I I don't see how moving the crosswalk could have a negative impact or a positive impact on access to the hotel. Most people from the westbound lane can turn in very easily. And people from the eastbound lane are going to use the center lane to make a left-hand turn. And that can be accommodated easily most of the time, but especially when there's a stoplight at the crosswalk. There's a very clear area to to allow for the left-hand turn into I I we still have the philosophy philosophy that the primary entrance into the hotel will be the most eastern driveway. And that the exit will be the most western. That's our, that's our position currently. But we'll, we have the ability to make that decision in the future. So those are my comments and and thank you, Craig, for being concerned about it. Appreciate it.
And thank you. And I I imagine that that probably Mr. Hakim would have similar comments then. Yeah, I guess I have one other question and but before I'll just underscore what Norm said about the drivers parking in the center lane. I have called the sheriff three or four times seeing that along in that section there, both there and further down by just a place further east, east, about half mile further east. And each time the sheriff has said, yeah, we'll get on it, but it it's it seems to be sort of a habitual thing. So I don't I don't know how that's resolved, but I guess my my other question is are there any downsides to this? I mean, we're we're getting a whole rosy picture about how this is going to improve it. What does this potentially make worse? Is there is there any downside? I guess that's a question for Sri.
Um, so I think what this is doing is it's going to resolve an existing issue out there. So we kind of looked at several different I guess, different options or starting to think about what will alleviate the queuing and the the conflicts with the left turns and the pads. And this really resolves that issue of of, you know, all that conflicts and and removal of queuing. At this point, I do not think I can't think of any, any, any downside to this solution, especially when we've moved, when we move the the Nobu driveway further east and then make that entrance only. I think it just these that allows for a lot less traffic into the intersection. So at this time, I can't think of anything.
What what about the flow within the parking lot with Nobu and Soho? It looks to me now, if I'm understanding correctly, that someone wanted to go to Soho coming from the west has to go all the way down in front of, well, to the east side of Nobu. That might be confusing for people at first. Maybe they'll get used to it. Does that does that change the flow of parking there at all?
That'll be like a traditional right turn movement into a driveway, just like you would move, you would turn into any side street. So I don't expect that to affect the queuing on PCH. I think a lot of it, the lot of these improvements were targeted at improving the flow on PCH, reducing the queuing on PCH. So I think it potentially might might be, there might need to be a bit more site management that, you know, those two properties may have to do, but what we were looking primarily at was resolving the current issues we have on PCH.
What happens to the middle driveway that is currently the entrance to Nobu and Soho? Does that become, are there now two exits or does that get blocked up? And so the only exit is at the far western end? Or how how does that work?
I see Director Debo has entered our meeting.
Yeah, Rob, maybe maybe you can.
So so a couple of things that we got a lot of things thrown at us and and I'll lighten everyone up a little bit on kind of what's what's transpired and I I think Jessica can have some input to on Nobu parking because we've had a meeting with them and kind of looking at this. But overall, I I I wish it, I wish the intersection was back up there again. I can kind of talk through a couple of things, but
Yeah, let's see it.
Yeah, well, just go back to Commissioner Hill. You brought up the idea of of hey, what can we do out there for the center median and what what things can we do to prevent? Sure, yeah, there's more enforcement. There's kind of doing it. But I I have some ideas. I'm gonna run some ideas through our Public Safety Commission, see what we can do, see if that means kind of new ordinance or do something. I I I I agree that the center median issue is throughout PCH is dangerous condition. Especially what Norm talked about where they park right in front and they go over to to McDonald's or somewhere. That's just that's ridiculous. That's that's taking a taking advantage of the situation. And so let's see what we can do from Public Safety Park part and do that. That's very good input and I I like hearing that and seeing how we can do to solve that. But if we have that backup. Alex, do you have that slide back again? But yeah, there you go. Okay, so I I just want to point out one thing right now, when the entrance to the Nobu parking lot is in the middle section. And when people come in from the Santa Monica, they queue up from where it says, you know, California one, a little symbol all the way across and that blocks everybody from coming in and coming out and calling the McDonald's coming everywhere. So this is this and and right now that intersection is only a pedestrian intersection. It's not a full traffic signal intersection. And so what this is doing is actually converting it to a pedestrian signal to a full a full traffic signal where you can have protected left turns, you can have the have those situations. Right now, we don't have that situation. And so, yes, this is definitely going to solve that issue. And and so having that, having that area, that intersection available, open and and spaced to where vehicles that want to turn left into McDonald's parking lot or other areas over there, they can do that. Previously, they couldn't because they would get backed up and then traffic would back up even farther going going eastbound on PCH. So that was the initial thought of how can we clean up this intersection a little bit better and and avoid that that queuing effect on on blocking some of the some of the areas.
So so we've got the new driveway on the eastern end of the parking lot. What what are the two other driveways for now?
So I I also want to point out that this gives the the Nobu and Soho House kind of a lot of different options on how they can operate and put things together. You're right. People are coming in from Santa Monica area can go to the traffic signal, turn left and and are in there. People from Soho can can actually do the same thing to get in there, but they can all, they can go across and then get in that center median and cross over there, talking to to Nobu official or people out there, they figure that most of the traffic is coming from or or is going towards Nobu and and you'll get a lot of cars coming, turning left and they're taking advantage of that. Not a whole lot of cars coming from Soho going across and then queuing up and getting the center median. But
Is the center driveway an in or an out now?
It it could be both. It it could be both. So and and that just gives them a lot of options on how to do it, and especially the far, the far west, there's three, there's three driveways. And so this really gives them a lot of flexibility and ways to manage their traffic coming in and out. And and probably Jessica has more. I'm I'm probably.
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll pause and let other commissioners. I'm still scratching a little bit, but thank you. That that was helpful.
Please leave the slide up. I have a couple of comments. First, the crosswalk appears to come in to the present exit of Nobu. And that apparently has shifted south. That eliminates parking spaces approximately four. Nobu is underparked and has a CUP which requires those four spaces. In fact, they're they're in violation for twelve years on the city code enforcement. Well, that's a big problem in my mind. Eliminating parking spaces. That that parking, that crosswalk should not be into a driveway. You can see that the the blank space where the driveway is now. And you see the two, the cars parked parallel to the highway in the Nobu parking lot. Those will have to be removed. And that's actually eight cars. It's quite a few. Since we only have, as I remember, forty-six with with double stack parking. Now, I asked Jessica to bring the CUP requirements because they are not allowed, as I remember, and it's been twelve years. They are not allowed three entrances and exits. They do not have the choice to pick how they're going to do it. And they've been cited by the city for doing that. And that's why I don't see how it could possibly approve this tonight when it's in violation of a CUP. So that's one problem I see. Now, we also have pretty rampant of the of the CUP.
I'm sorry, before you go on, can we just talk about that one issue so far and get the Jessica's response?
Sure. So I actually do have the slide. If RIT folks wouldn't mind pulling up, I have two slides at the end of my presentation. If you wouldn't mind pulling that up. And I do want to note, Director Debo had kind of touched on this. That staff has met with both the Nobu and Soho representatives. They have an active conditional use permit amendment specifically to address the traffic issues that will be coming before the commission. Staff has worked with them and sent them the plans, the crosswalk relocation and in order for them to reanalyze and redo their traffic study and they're going to resubmit that to both the Planning Department and the Public Works Department for review and analysis of that. And that will be coming before the commission.
Now, is the cart before the horse?
Yeah, I thought that too.
Okay, well, let's wait for the the
Are you, that it, Vice Chair Mazza?
Oh, I've got eight questions. But first, you know, I I'm trying to determine you know, whether this can even go through tonight.
I'm sorry, it should be the last. There's two slides after the recommendation approval.
Okay. That's very telling in that you have ingress and egress and the center is not to be used for that. The reason why we had, I think it was five hundred and eighty ingresses in the middle is because they wanted to have a Nobu parking stand in the middle. But it's a violation and it's it's a violation by the city on them. It's not a, it's not a theoretical violation. The city has declared it a violation. So this is a big conflict and you can see the eight spaces over to the very south end of of Nobu's parking. Those are required. Absolutely no question they're required. And that's also a violation of parking off-site. So this is why we have to consider this. Because it's a CUP we voted on and the council voted on.
John, would it solve the
We can't have the staff negotiating away the CUP that it was only given by the planning commission, not the staff. What were you gonna say, Craig?
Would would it solve the issue you're raising to, i- if you're taking away the four or six parking spaces on the east end? If you blocked up the center driveway and put those parking spaces there, would that not both accommodate the new proposal and remedy there? Then there would only be the two driveways as the CUP indicated. Would that would that fix it or is that still a problem?
Would fix it. They'd have to amend their their CUP, but I don't see how they could possibly amend their CUP. That's why I was talking about the cart and the horse, the way it is now, because that would be eliminating parking spaces. And that is the the problem. The other problem on PCH right there, this is the cork in PCH. Right there, that center driveway. I've seen cars wind across the highway going south and down past the light, trying to make that turn. That's why you have five hundred and eighty. And the other ones only have a few. So your suggestion is good. And in this case, what you would be talking about is reversing those arrows because they're talking about as the presentation said, you would go in Nobu and out Soho. So that could be a solution if you reverse the arrows up and down. But again, it has to amend the CUP. Now, if we can go back to the, well, is what's the next slide?
Hey, John, can I, can I, can I jump in? Maybe I I tend to agree with you guys a little bit on kind of the, I can see a kind of a horse before the cart or the cart before the horse kind of scenario here where, yeah. I I think at this point you know, council asked me to give to give you guys a presentation on the overall project, kind of see this, the signal scene and how that's going to work. It's a really a upgrade to this traffic signals. It it's gonna fix the timing dynamically and do all that kind of really cutting edge kind of stuff, giving us the ability to change the signals when, you know, if there isn't a disaster kind of a thing where we had where we tried to get all the signals green, we didn't have the ability to do that. With this new system, we have that ability. This intersection does kind of, you know, it'd be nice to do this intersection, but yeah, it kind of ties into what the Nobu amendment kind of does, like what they're going to do. And and so I think we can just kind of keep this kind of on the the block as one of our tools to to go to solve a problem in in this area. And if this is going to be a good solution for Nobu, you know, And uh uh if this is gonna be a good solution for Nobu, you know, going on, we can always revisit us and kind of come back and add it and kind of put it in. Uh uh I think I think we can probably, that's that's probably a better approach than hearing from everybody about the uh um the CDP amendment.
Well.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. I didn't understand.
This would not happen.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Mazza.
What?
Go ahead.
I'm saying this would not, you're saying this would not happen, what we're hearing tonight.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can move forward with the with the other project, with the with the main project a- and do all the improvements to all the all the intersections and do all the um signal upgrades kind of a thing. This intersection won't be adjusted yet or or moved in until we get the Nobu amendment coming in and and we can look at that and kind of see, and 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 we can add this at at a later date if i- if we feel that the the amendment and their changes to their parking plan coincide with this type of uh s- signal modification.
Okay, so we'd be in a situation where this just wouldn't happen all of a sudden and we wouldn't know about it.
It's it's what now?
We wouldn't be in a situation where the council approves uh payment for the plan or whatever they have to approve, and this just happens and we don't get to weigh in on.
Oh, yeah, no, I didn't know. This would come back to you for uh for the um the signal modification or that's the the signal relocation would come back.
Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
What my motion was gonna be, but I have some other questions uh just so.
Thank, okay.
Can we go over the whole project as you presented it, just to add some comments?
Sure, go ahead.
One.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. That was that, that's not really on our agenda, right? It was just this one, one specific item?
Uh yeah, but i- if that was one of the things that council had brought to me and said, hey, make sure you give the uh planning commission a presentation on the overall project, kind of kind of see what's kind of going on and ask your questions. And and by the way, well, uh um the signal uh uh relocation requires a a a separate CDP then to to do that. And so it it's it it's a little bit of both. I I I don't mind answering questions on either part of it and kind of a thing and fire away.
Okay, so I just have general questions that may or may not change your plan, but uh are we paying for the DePanga light since it's not in our city?
That one i- is included.
We pay for it.
Yeah.
Why are we paying for something outside of the city?
Um it it was a uh part of the funding came from um the county. Part of the uh part of the overall funding we have for Major R for this project did get transferred over to uh from the county. So the county had some con- some contribution to the overall project cost and 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 those will be going towards um that portion portion of the project.
Isn't that DePanga light in the city of LA?
Um y- yeah, but the county has the jurisdiction to go ahead and and issue those funds for that.
Okay, so they're they're paying for it, not us.
Correct.
Okay, um now you talked about being able to tell if there's a bike there on the highway. Are there any bike lanes involved in this?
No, this is just upgrading the signals. There there's no uh um bike improvements, there's no lanes improvements or anything else. Uh um as a side note, we are looking for additional funding for those types of improvements in this section of a PCH. And I'm crossing my fingers we get some type of funding to do something in there. Uh but that this the project doing any type of bike lanes, that kind of stuff is outside the scope.
Okay, so that brings the question of why do we want to detect if there's a bike there if you can't do anything about it, or can you?
Well, there's, I I mean, there's there is shoulder areas and and cyclists that go and and use uh left turns and they use part of it, uh um the signal on there, especially left turns. If you're trying to make a left turn and and you're a cyclist trying to get activated in in that, you know, the the loop detectors out there, it's almost impossible. And so this new detection system that that is gonna be um introduced into these intersections will be able to pick up um cyclists in in those areas and and will give them the green light and safe to 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 turn left.
Okay, so that brings up another question. Are you gonna dig up ten miles of the highway on both sides to put in fiber optic and new detectors?
It it's, yeah, it's it's gonna be a underground conduit that's probably gonna be put in by a boring system.
Okay.
And and it's gonna be put in the ground that way and it's kind of going through that way.
There's no possibility of sharing the uh current fiber optic lines in there?
I I um a- at this time, I I can't say yes or no.
Okay, might save a bunch of money uh.
They won't, they don't, they don't want anybody tying into those lines. They don't want anybody cutting their line and getting there and and scavenging on. There's no way that that's ever gonna happen.
Yeah, um Commissioner Mazza, if I can jo- if I can just quickly add, yeah, uh the Caltrans uh because of security issues, uh because these are all tied to traffic signals and the infrastructure, so Caltrans do do not allow for any uh fiber optic sharing with another, a third party.
Okay, well, I just want to point out on in the Carbon Beach area, there's conduit lines that are shared, uh so you can put your own line in the same conduit.
No, you can't, but, okay, go ahead.
You certainly can on 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 any other, any telephone line conduit, but uh because the cable companies go through there. So no bike paths. And if okay, uh let me see. Are there any ba- uh are there any solar recharging facilities on these uh battery packs?
Um not yet.
Uh can they be recharged by solar if we have, like in the Woolsey Fire, we have eleven days without electricity?
Yeah, I I I've been talking to Caltrans and Edison about that situation to see. I I believe they have some pilot programs or looking to see what type of solar system they could, if taking place in there. They don't have a system that's in place that would get that, but it 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 is on the books to look at, kind of see if they're they would have that. If that is available in in and um that's something that both Caltrans and SCE said that they would be interested in doing. And and of course, we would be interested in trying to be a a local partner to see if we can get that going. Absolutely.
Okay, and last question is if you have the entrance at Nobu and the exit at Soho, is there some kind of timing device you could have that would make the southbound lane have gaps in it or the exit? Because we're gonna have looks like if you have five, well, like six hundred cars a day coming in at Nobu. Uh granted, a large portion of them, we're going south and they won't have any problem, but the ones going north will block the highway or west, I guess, uh if they back up too much on the center divider. So is there any gap, any provision for a gap there or and that'd be right across from Norm's Hotel about?
Yeah, I'll I'll let Sri kind of answer that the the traffic timing stuff and see if he, see what he kind of thinks about that.
Yeah, the the inbound movement um naturally allows for some breaks just because of the the progression and the platooning of traffic. Is the amount of green time that left turn in at Nobu requires and the pedestrian crossing time. Uh there will be uh a good amount of gaps that will be created um for the the lefts, uh the left out of the uh the further uh western driveway. So there is that opportunity.
What what I'm wondering is and this is only summertime, but if you have a light at the Nobu Inn, when you come in at Nobu, that's gonna tend to back up the highway towards the exit. Uh and I just don't want to block that driveway with people leaving. When they can't get out, that will block up people coming in. Because you probably only have room for thirty cars or so, maybe forty cars in the center aisle.
Yeah, I I I think I think what would help um if we had the actual numbers of turning movements coming out of the driveways because or how many people are coming from the Santa Monica area going because i- i- in your situation, leaving that western driveway going out, that you're assuming that they're gonna have to make a left to go and and cross going out in there. And so um if the majority of the people that are going out are turning right to go back to Santa Monica on the west side, then.
Yeah, that's that's my question.
Yeah, yeah.
Granted, uh I think it was about two thirds would be going south.
Yeah, I I I think we can get that.
If the light is red at Nobu and these people are going south, they're gonna tend to back it up. And then the people who are just going south from Oxnard or wherever are still going south, so there may or may not be gaps at the east end of the parking lot. So I don't know if they're gonna do that flashing lights or whatever, keep clear.
Keep clear, yeah.
Ought to be in the plan. That that was just, you you don't want to lock them in there is my only point. You gotta let them out somehow. Uh now, the other last point I'm gonna make is the city because you're moving the parking lot, I mean, the the light uh and there's various parking spots, especially right across the street from Nobu, there's a vacant lot that has been being used for parking. There's also an office building there that has been used for parking. And you'll get in a situation of a two-lane left turn across the, across the intersection into that parking lot when people are stopped at the light. And so it'll render, now granted, those are not legal parking places, but it'll render them useless at certain times of the day. And I just hope you consider enforcement or something of those lots, because if people try to make that move, uh they're gonna end up in the middle of the intersection. I I don't know if you remember what I'm talking about, but right to the, across from the red arrow out by Nobu, if you go right across from their parking lot, there's a, there's a while there's, first, there's a old motel and then there's a big lot. You won't be able to make that move. Because there'll be people stopped at the light. Granted, it's a legal move anyway, but uh just keep that in mind.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and take a stab at this.
I'm sorry, I had two other observations.
You can hang on because you got to speak already. So I'm going to to me, this this seemed like more of a formality that came to us. Um I it's Caltrans's deal. It's nice if they asked us to speak about it, but I'm sure if they really wanted to do it, they could do it. Obviously, we we know that can get done like that because a light down the street got put in. So um you know, I'm watching the cars make a left to come in now and uh heading uh westbound. You know, it is gonna have to really be know what the changes are. People have been coming to this for so long that they know which way to come in and which way to go out. I, you know, to come in the center and still come in from the the east side of that driveway, that should be interesting. That'll be interesting because now you've got two cars coming together this way. I'm not sure how they're gonna do that, but you know, that's up to them to figure that out. I guess somebody talked to them about it. And another thing is, you know, the traffic and whatnot, traffic studies are are really interesting and fun. I'm lucky enough to, and very few people that have wo- that work in this town now or have worked have been in the position I have, um which, you know, it's almost like I'm the bad guy of the world, but I did build build master plan communities. And I was in Temecula first and Murrieta and Lake Elsinore. And with Temecula, we put in lights that Sri is talking about with the coordinated systems all the way from the fifteenth freeway all the way out to Butterfield Stage Road for me on Highway seventy-nine South, or which is now Temecula Valley Parkway. With these lights and the and the condit- and having this kind of control is phenomenal. I know you, nobody really understands it because they haven't worked around it. I worked on it in Lake Elsinore. I did it in my old hometown in Murrieta. It's phenomenal how well this works. And with Mr. Director Debo talking about a cyclist in the left turn lane because that's his thing, he knows that. Um the the camera sees that and they they turn on the light so you can make a left or whatever you're gonna do. So the big picture here is if we don't put this thing in now or they don't start on it, it's gonna have to go in at some point because it has to coordinate. So all the way from DePanga to the east, all the way through, I, you know, I don't know why we would want to put a wait time on this when we could get started on it now. It's gonna be part of the system. Then what? It holds up because we don't do this now, it holds up the synchronization of all the lights and it dead stops right here at Nobu and we can't continue it on through? That's that's not how I'm looking at this. So um I'd I'd rather see this thing get done. I mean, they're gonna do it one way or another probably, but uh I'd rather see all this stuff synchronizing all the way through and not have a dead spot in the middle and we where we can't move forward. That's the reason they're doing this, so they can make this whole thing work from one end of town to the other. Uh Director Debo.
Yeah, it it's i- if we don't relocate the signal at this location, the signal controller will still get updated and will still be part of the signal sync. It's just the signal itself uh won't get relocated into the right location. And so during the process, if we're in construction and kind of doing anything, if we have time that we can add it to the the contractor and do that, we can do that or do a separate project. It it's, I mean, regardless, that's that signal controller will get updated. It's whether or not that the signal will be, the signal poles and the configuration will get changed. But that's, that's kind of how, that's, that's how that would have worked. So there wouldn't be a dead spot. It would just, it it would work continuously as designed. It's just this, this location doesn't um or the poles and 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 the signal wouldn't get changed. And and I kind of kind of agree with uh um it's, it's like, it's the cart before the horse kind of a thing. I I I kind of see it now and made some good points and and let's let's see what they come back with Nobu and kind of see and knowing this that we have, this is an option later on to do this. We can do it. I we can add it pretty easily and kind of do it. We'll have everything in place, ready to go. It it's just a matter of i- if this this works in with everything, then then let's do that.
Okay, Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you. Uh two up, two observations, one about the overall project and one about this particular element. Um on the overall, I uh was in the softball league this past summer and so was able to come past the pedestrian light in front of the beach hotel eight weeks in a row on Sundays around noon or one PM. So I got a really sort of consistent look at what was happening with the traffic flow and 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 discovered that already by noon or one PM, heading eastbound on Sundays in the summer, there's a backup to John Tyler Drive or so that's all been being caused by the beach in signal that is not synchronized and because there are a lot of pedestrians just pushing that button. And as I'm heading east, once I got through the beach in at only noon or one PM, it's clear sailing all the way to Big Rock. So that was the that the big backup right away. And just a reminder, I don't know how I stumbled upon this, but I was looking at the beach in MOU with uh Coastal Commission in conjunction with something else, and I discovered that part of their MOU said that that signal was expressly required to be if there were to be any synchronization with the whole city, that that signal needed to be synchronized with the system. And I know that so far the plan has been, oh yeah, that's a free-floating uh on-demand system. But that's, that's clearly not working. And I think that MOU, we need to look back at that and say, yeah, integrate this signal with the rest of the whole sync system. Okay, so that that's that observation. And then just about this particular element. Yeah, I'd be much more comfortable looking at this little unit of the highway and the parking lot a little more holistically and addressing this at the same time with the CUP amendment and and having these Nobu and so uh more active players in figuring out how this all really flows. So yeah, I thi- I think we're on the same page about that.
Vice Chair Mazza?
It's my understanding that the crosswalk lights will not be, will be synchronized, they will not be push the button and it turns red or it turns green. Is that right? Will not be, will be synchronized, they will not be, push the button and it turns red, or it turns green, is that right?
Yeah, correct, yeah, you have the ability to control that.
Well, a- and, and so, it's like in a lot of cities, you push that little button, it doesn't mean anything. You just gotta wait your turn.
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I think what, what Commissioner Hill was talking about, it kinda, it, it hits it, it hits it, and starts backing up. Well, the good thing about this dynamic, uh, control system, well, it, it will notify, it, it will kinda pick up that. Signals are, or traffic be backed up and automatically adjust all the signals to accommodate that, a- and will. Definitely will reduce the amount of time or the, the, the times that they'll, they'll trigger over for that pedestrian, because. There'll be more traffic kinda going through, traffic will go through, a- and it'll definitely, the pedestrian will, will, they will get a green time to go by, but it, it won't be. Like, hey, this, this push button controls everything, it, it's, it's, it's not gonna be that way.
It won't preempt anything, right?
I, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item into a data insert.
I'll second that motion for the, for the reasons discussed.
Right.
So, yeah.
So we'll put the cart in front of the horse, or behind the horse.
See, you did it too, I, I.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, okay, well, in that case, I guess we make this easier, we can have a roll call, Rebecca.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Nope.
Motion carries.
I- if I could just clarify, Dennis, this, this, the rest of the project goes ahead and this remains synchronized, so I, I don't think that there's any urgency there.
Okay, fair enough. Um, okay, well, we don't have any old business. And we don't have any new business. And do we take a roll call for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
And could I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for the presentations, thank you, Jessica.
Yes, thank you for everything.